As you can see, there was some, so option two, which was two grades moving up, had consistently low support. Everyone was like, no, no thank you. And there were, there were a few different reasons why. One was that it would over, I think overcrowd the high school and we would lose some of our really great learning spaces, like our technology labs and, and other things. And then option three, it, it really had some support, but people felt like they had more questions. And there was a growing concern over, well, what will happen if the bridges become a problem? So it was almost like if we knew exactly what the bridges were going to do and when they were going to do it, you, you might see more support for option three. Continuing on, so here are the options in pie chart form, pie chart form. Let me actually try to make it bigger so you can see it from home. So very supportive is blue and somewhat supportive is red. And so all in total, we have, it looks like close to 80%. Yeah, so either somewhat or very supportive. And then some folks needed some more information. It's the opposite look for option two. And obviously with the yellow being not supportive, but it's about 80%. And then for option three, again, in the very supportive, which is blue and the somewhat supportive, which is red, you've got over 50%.
Fifty-eight percent?
Thank you. And so again, that, that's definitely something to take note of, but it, but it isn't a 70 or an 80. And I think again, that people had a lot of questions, but they were also, what I found interesting at the listening sessions is there'd be some discussion, but by the end of the listening sessions, you see some people go, oh, there was kind of almost like now that I know a little more, I, I might consider that as well. So that, that's probably the same feeling. And then we asked basically, if you had to choose one option today, which is what, you know, we'll be looking at tonight and hopefully the school committee will be able to give us clear direction on a plan to bring back in November for vote. We do have option one at 53.3% for the move one grade up. Option three at the neighborhood school at 33, so you do kind of have a clear choice here. And keeping in mind that option three includes a move one grade up.
Yes.
So neighborhood schools, meaning they get realigned, but it had the one grade up move already. So it's kind of, you know, a rough support for that. Then we asked people kind of what's most important to you, and we heard these again through all the discussion at the listening sessions. So what's most important, especially to parents, is that we're, we, which we promised we will be, we're being really thoughtful about how we're planning. Thoughtful in the experiences our kids would have, thoughtful in how the moves would happen. I mean, everything from, we've been, you know, we've been seeing this as a possibility now for a little bit. And so we know that at the end of this year, if this is the choice, we need to transition two grades of children up, not just physically, but mentally. We need to get them ready for their next school when they probably didn't know that, well, they will know by then, that they would be going there. And so how do you, how do you do all that? Show them rooms that aren't yet set up for them yet and all that. But there's, there's a lot of planning to do. But that's why I especially want to speak with students and find out, you know, what's on their mind. For example, you know, as a fifth grader, will I still have recess? Well, yes, I hope so. As a mom, I really hope so. So, you know, how do we figure all that out and make sure that that happens for kids? So this shows some of the key insights based on families. Our, our parents, especially in the surveys, answered from a place of, of concern in the reality they were living in. So our Bourndale families did really have a lot of information, you know, that they wanted about their childhood, about pre-K, BIS being in the middle, they had some transition concerns, BMS. That those grade levels had a little more to say about seventh grade especially, but then also seventh and eighth, and you know, really wanted to make sure that was developmentally appropriate. And the VHS families, again, some of them with the kiddos being their oldest, were like, well, this isn't going to affect my, my student, but these are the things I would be looking at. Retention, specialized spaces, and then cost. So what we also have here is a summary of all the comments. So I'd like to thank my friend ChatGPT for helping me with this. But I did read through it, reread through it and edit. Like I said, this will be published on our website, so it should have zero names or, or talk about any specific people. Because there, there was a lot in the comments where people gave some alternate choices and asked for some other clarity. And then we also put, which is why it's very long and keeps scrolling real quick, all of the comments. They were edited only to take out names. There were at least two that named their own children. And so we just took those out.
Okay, thank you.
But I was again glad that all of these comments were productive. There is good things in them. We can learn a lot from them. I personally learned a lot from, from this process. So I'm very, I'm very thankful for that. So that's what I have. And then I'm interested to hear next steps and what your thoughts are and kind of see where we'll be going. And so what my hope is, my request, is that you can give us some direction on a plan to bring to you on November first, November fifth, excuse me, beginning of the month. So we'll kind of tease out all these different aspects and say, so if this happens, this is what it would look like. So we've got a lot more research to do, including, you know, going to other school districts, looking at things. But also if there's something that you see or you've heard that's worth continuing to explore, but maybe we're not acting on it right away, then give us some direction and say, we'd like to look at that again this time next year. Or could you start planning, anything that has construction or capital improvements? We need to get rolling on that really fast.
Yes.
Because it is for this coming September, we are submitting to the town November first.
Right, right. Okay, okay.
I'm happy to answer any questions along the way.
Very much. Thank you, Dr. Joe. So the most fiscally responsible right now would be, choice one, number one, would be the move one grade up. Is that correct?
And as people said, it would probably be the least impactful.
Least impactful, okay, okay. And then I just want to talk to everyone about the BES and pre-K. So, because I think people liked those examples. So the BES is busting at the seams. I'm sure Mrs. Carpanino will agree with me there. I, I've visited over the summer and it was, it's just really, really crowded. Not crowded, I mean, it's good, it's, it's good. If we do get any incoming students, which we foresee, we're going to have to put, you know, create a homeroom with no windows perhaps. Maybe have a homeroom on a stage. Maybe pull art and put it on a cart and have a homeroom there. So there's a lot of reasons why we wouldn't, I, I know I wouldn't want my child in a homeroom without windows. You know, or learning, you know, how to paint off of a cart. So that's just me personally. So is anyone swaying?
Well, I think it would be, I know you could have, you know, maybe two options.
Yeah.
But do we really, I, my personal opinion is, I don't think we need to have you kind of start with two. I think, I think we should be able to decide myself for one option.
One option.
Because that's going to give you guys the opportunity to bring more information about that one option to the table when we go to, you know, really vote on it.
Okay.
So that, that's just my, yes.
I second that. I agree.
I agree.
Yeah.
Oh, this is easy.
Well, I think, quite honestly, the report you, the, the survey and the report you put together with quantitative data, I think when I looked at previous surveys, it wasn't as much quantitative and it just, it speaks to what everybody wants. It's not like we're seeing one group is leaning one way and one group is leaning another way and another group just doesn't like anything. I mean, everybody is leaning in the same direction.
Everybody understands we have to do something.
Do something.
Exactly.
Yeah, and I think the majority, a, a pretty good majority, it's not like by three points. It's a good majority is all leaning in one direction. So I think it, it's a good strategy to say, starting there, now what would be the questions? Instead of waiting a month to get to that conclusion, which I think most people would probably come to right now anyway, based on the data.
Yeah, it seems like most people are in favor of option one, option one from our group.
So do we have to vote on that?
We need to like, you know, have our short term, this is what we're thinking. And then the long term, like this is also what we're thinking.
Okay.
So we're not totally taking everything else off the table.
Right, exactly. You're totally right. Because we want, you know, like I said, a one, two, three, you know, a five-year plan. So do we have to vote on this or do we just propose?
Vote tonight. It would, if I can, I'm hearing a consensus, it's like a consensus vote. But, but if there's anything else you'd like us to look into, so for example, so you're starting to talk about pre-K. There was a lot of interest in more pre-K options. Some people were saying, you know, on this side of the bridge. And so that may take a, a two-year build out to be able to do something with capital, find the space and do that. So if that is something you'd like us to look into, it won't be our first priority. We'll bring you the other one first, but we would be starting to, you know, form a team of, you know, pre-K specialists to look at that. Additionally, people want more pre-K types of options, meaning like a full day option for working families. That could probably be achieved in the first year. If, if it's a one move up, we would be looking at a Bourndale scenario, maybe having some other programs there. Because now we have the space.
Yes, absolutely.
So we can work something like that up. The other thing I heard kind of personally loud and clear from people is we have a spacious high school. Right? We have the ability to, to have specialized classrooms. We have one of the biggest auditoriums, you know, this, this side of the Cape and, go ahead.
No, it's one of the biggest in the south.
Yeah, so and that, you know, for our theater program, for all that. If we were thinking of a more expensive model where we were going to do something with this actual building, we wouldn't have all those spaces. So people understood that. No one's a fiscally responsible, but we have the space. And we, meaning my, my team and our maintenance department have done an amazing job putting on new roofs and new carpeting and, you know, different things. But it is an older building with an older aesthetic. So if this committee were interested in having us pursue a renovation, you know, where, whether it's aesthetic or whether it actually is a real renovation, that's going to take us at least two years to queue up.
Okay.
So when you think about town meeting and capital and all that. So that would be something that if you're like, well, we would like that, please look into it. Then we'd be coming back to that two years down the road, but it really has to start now.
Okay.
So all these little things.
Thank you.
I don't want to be reading your mind, but it's like, it's amazing how far backwards timelines have to go for certain things. Some things we can do this year, other things would take a couple of years.
Sure.
Oh, yeah, that definitely seems like something we would want further down, as well as pursuing the potential for neighborhood schools. But that, I wouldn't say that was the number one priority for now.
Right, so, and I would agree. I think it came out of people's wonderings about the bridges. There were also real reasons for people who currently live very far away from Bourndale. So that came out as well. But yeah, if, if it's something that you'd want us to keep on our radar, we absolutely would do that. And then just tell us the timeline when we bring it back up again.
So for the, for the November meeting, what's the expectation? Like, do we have to just come up with the immediate plan and the second plan? Or saying we're going to table it, knowing there'll be a phase two and we have to explore that more? Like what's the expectation for that November meeting?
Budgetarily, I'll need to know what you want us to do next year. That's kind of, and we'll bring you as much as we can, kind of what Mrs. McCray said. We'll, we'll be, we've already started talking with principals, talking with teachers. I'll go back and talk to them. We'll talk to students and we'll say, okay, this is what we're planning. Give us your input. And we'll kind of look at schedules, we'll look at facilities, we'll look at transportation. There's so many pieces.
Right, absolutely.
Yeah. And so in November, we, we won't have to be all, end all of a plan because, you know, that's a lot to do in a month, but we'll have answers to a lot of the questions some of the parents asked. And we'll be able to re-present that to you to, to vote on, so that we can, you know, start taking our budget together.
Okay.
If there is something capital related, meaning a building project, then we would need that sooner rather than later, because it has to go into our budget cap. Which we have some placeholders in there.
Okay.
And I think people need to understand too, the community, that it's very fluid. So if they didn't, you know, see or make the, you know, meet the opportunity for these sessions, they can still send messages, they can still reach out.
Sure.
Because it's something that's going to be, you know, a process. We just have to get it started.
Right, right. I mean, we have one clear cut vote we need to do in November. But like you said, it is. Yeah, to get it going. So I guess we'll do a raise of hands or, oh, do you have something to say?
By the November meeting, will we have gotten to hear feedback from students on the plans? Like, I just think that like before we vote, I think it would be helpful to hear what kids in the different schools have to say to.
Yes, absolutely. That's so important, absolutely. And we're really not calling an official vote. We will definitely take into consideration what the students, absolutely, like we do with the teachers too. Yeah, good point. Thank you. So thoughts on, or raise your hand if you like option one, the grade level up. One grade level up. So I guess we like, we like that. But I, I love what you were saying, Dr. Joe, with, you know, maybe talking about how we can, you know, move into the neighborhood schools. And I love fixing up the aesthetics with this high school. So, you know, maybe we can talk about those.
That's a big piece too, especially bringing the eighth graders here.
Yes.
So clearly.
They've done such a good job inside. You guys have done a really good job inside. We just need the outside.
Work on the plan for the one, one move up and all those aspects of the plan.
Yep.
Continue having discussions about at least immediate aesthetics, because we're going to be moving eighth grade here in that plan. But then also maybe start to get some more information about a renovation two years down the road. And then my last question is, how are you thinking about pre-K? What would you like us to do, come immediate for that?
And too, how we can add more classrooms immediately.
Yeah.
One move up would add more classrooms, so I can start launching those discussions as well.
Absolutely.
I have a question. Would we, do we only have the opportunity based on space to do, add more or to expand it to full day? Like, could we do both?
I think we can do both. I'd like to have a lot more discussion with the staff. Because we would have the space.
Yep.
And then how we fill that space, you know, we obviously need integrated, which is the way it runs right now.
Yep.
We might be able to do something for like full day working families, including our staff.
Yeah, exactly.
I do not think we can do something here at the high school in year one, but I do think building out to year two is a possibility. It's usually about two years to get a full CTE program together and meaning a pathway for kids. But we would have to kind of have everything in place and prove to them we can do the pathway. So starting in the year might make sense.
Would parents still have to pay for preschool if it was full day and extra? Because that's different than universal pre-K, right?
Yes. Again, just off the top of my head, without having explored it, I think yes. So we wouldn't be building a budget that would give free universal pre-K. We'll still be tuition based. But yeah, I think there are some, some ways to.
Still very reasonable, the cost of it.
Yeah. And I think with the eighth grade moving up, I, we just had our meeting yesterday, right? With the eighth grade, a lot of eighth grade teachers and they definitely will help you out. You know, with kind of transitioning. Absolutely, absolutely. They had so, so much good, so much good feedback, yeah.
Sometimes you learn a lot of what not to do, right? They told us kind of what it was like 25 years ago. What I thought was really, for lack of a better word, fun is we heard from people who were parents of eighth graders at the time, 25 years ago, people who were eighth graders themselves and they're now grownups. We heard from teachers of the eighth graders of that time. And so we kind of got all these different perspectives to let us know what we definitely need to do differently. So, yeah.
Okay.
Next step is definitely talk with the students to hear about their experience and do all that. I'll set those up within the next two weeks.
And then we'll, yeah, absolutely.
And actually, Zoe, I don't want to take you out of class, but if they are in the after-school time, I'd love for student advisory member to partner with you on those. That'd be really great.
Oh, that would be good. Okay. All right, sounds great. Thank you so much. Do you have your, you're all set with your list or?
Yeah.
Yes.
I think I'm pretty clear.
Okay, all right, good. Thank you. Thank you, everybody. That was awesome. Any more questions or anything on that? Nope, nope. Alrighty. Okie doke. So superintendent's report.
All right, we've got lots of great stuff here. First of all, it is Custodian Appreciation Day this week. We love our custodians. They're amazing. They're the heartbeat of our, of our schools. I have a feeling Mr. Geis might be saying something about it a little later. You owe him, thank you now.
Oh.
But I wanted to personally thank our custodians and maintenance staff, of which is a very small staff, but they're really wonderful. And then some of our principals might also talk about how we celebrate them at the schools. We thought the right thing to do was to not ask them to come after hours to be presented with anything, because they work so hard all day and we do have the night crew here at night. So, but from the bottom of our hearts, we want to thank our custodians. They're, they're really amazing. Now, we have all of our principals and some of our other great administrators here. And we are going to launch into our school improvement plan. So I'm going to hand it over to Liz Carpanino. And I will click into the, we call them SIPs for short. These, these are, you must vote on them at the end of this evening. So get ready for that vote and that's Massachusetts regulation. And they are all aligned with our strategic plan. You'll see similarities to, to last year's. You'll also hear about our, what we improved on or maybe what we didn't quite make from the year before. And you'll hear also that there are similarities between schools, so they might, they might share some of their thoughts. So that said, tell me which page to start on.
I am down on last, the review of last year.
A little bit more. You can use it all on our website.
Right in there. So I'll briefly go over last year's goals. So our first and second goal from last year were a focus on our curriculum, so math and ELA. And really strengthening tier one instruction. Each year we've, we've built upon where we had been in the previous year. And that goal of implementing math workshop at least three times a week really helped the students' faculty and under the guidance of Director Dix. We have common relevant assessments for each grade level. Their teacher created, so there's a lot more buy-in. It's very authentic. It's really what the students are working on, so it gives us that, that true glimpse of where students are at. The success of our student reading proficiency goal was driven by school-wide focus of expanding the educator's capacity to analyze data. We make sure that we're taking in relevant data as opposed to just constantly benchmarking or assessing and testing the students. So it's very relevant. And they're really targeting on closing those equity gaps for our students and making sure that the instruction interventions are really targeted to what the students need. This student-focused conversations predominantly took place during the Common Planning Times. Again, Director Dix really has moved that role of those weekly meetings to target what the students need and to bring in those conversations. So it's, it's really turned over into just how the teachers start to talk and making sure that the students have what they need during those times. That also really took place in our data meetings as well, our data team meetings. And allowed everyone in the building to be looking at participating for students and having focus point curves. That last goal of ours, our third goal, has always really helped our student culture. You know we love a good theme. Last year, we expanded upon that to really look at our social emotional learning. And we brought in the six traits and really focused on them on a monthly basis to make sure that we were pulling in our youngest learners to create a positive learning environment. And really explicitly teaching those traits to create a social emotional support system for those students within the classroom. So we aligned those six character traits to our B2B core values, the student handbook and our Bourndale vision of a graduate for the skills that we really wanted them to lead Bourndale with, to become really strong independent learners heading into their educational experience. And the feedback from our students and the staff was that they had definitely more positive school experience. And the teacher saw more of a generalization of those explicitly taught character skills throughout the school setting. It was our goal. For this year. I, well, I'm turning it over to Mrs. Dix for this year's goal. So for our first goal, we combined our curriculum for tier one instruction. And Mrs. Dix, turn it over.
This is a very happy place. Curriculum. The first goal is all around targeting the strong foundation and looking for that standards, standards-based and tier one instruction, making it strong so that we can reach this goal of 80% of our students in the proficient of, at the proficient level for grade level expectations. Part of the action steps around this are a lot of what Mrs. Carpanino just spoke about. It's really a continuation of last year where we are going to be working on the benchmarking three times a year. We just wrapped up doing that. Making this Common Planning Time be more focused on what the data we gather from these benchmarks tells us and then helps us to drive the instruction. We have wind blocks back again and that focus on what the data is telling us and how best to move forward and putting together the best practices from PD all kind of come together full circle with this, with this goal. We brought the idea of beefing up our phonics instruction last year in, in implementing that UFLI program. And so that is fully in place this year. And so we will be looking for that as we do walkthroughs, the, the learning walks and just in visits, classroom visits and coaching during Common Planning Time around that program. We also implemented a 90-minute schedule for literacy blocks and a 60-minute schedule for math for everybody so they can have that uninterrupted time for instruction in those two content areas. And we are implementing once again the co-teaching model so that we can provide that targeted instruction for all of our students. So that's pretty much goal one in a nutshell. It's a continuation, as I said, of last year. But a lot of work that we have done still needs to continue. And we just, we'll, we'll be building on that through the data teams, the literacy team, Common Planning and, am I leaving out any? Oh, no, I said data. So yeah, that's goal one.
That's great. Thank you.
Mrs. McLaughlin apologized. She needed to leave. She was hoping to be able to present goal number two. She has experience with this particular goal, which is around the pyramid model that we will be working with this year. So as we talked about, we have the wonderful job of bringing in the youngest students in the district and exposing them into the, the public education, right? So we want to make sure that that foundation is always set for them to feel safe in this school, to really love learning and to make sure they've got a long career ahead of them. So each year, we really get to build upon what we've done before and make sure that we're making it even stronger for the students. They've been coming in with much different needs than they have in the past. So the pyramid model helps us bring all of that together. It works with the best that we've already put in place through our MTSS team, but also really looks at the environment. So what are we putting in place for our students so that they truly know that they belong in the classroom environment, in their school? And that they, they feel safe there. They feel valued and that, that then leads them to be successful learners. So the pyramid model really helps us bring that in. We were lucky enough to be included in the last year of a grant group state where we're going to have our own trainer come in with us. The reason why they were able to grandfather us in, normally it's a three-year program, is because all of the work that we've already done is what they would have done the first two years with all of their other schools. So that was really nice that they were able to come in and see that we were at that starting point for the third year. So they're going to be working with us to enhance what we have in place. When we talked to our school council about this goal, the parents were very excited because there were different environments that everybody kind of noted that they saw this really working with. You know, some set the bus, you know, will they look at the environment on the bus for students? And yes, they will. There will be parent components so that, you know, the students take what they're learning in the building and they're able to bring that and generalize that into any other setting that they're on, whether it's teams, whether it's in their home environment. So we'll be able to work with the leadership team, what we already have in place, and build upon that model and work with our SST team as well to identify very specific student needs and put some plans in place so that their social emotional well-being really works hand in hand with their academic performance. So that is our second goal.
Can I just ask a question?
Sure.
So the quantitative piece, as far as BES will increase percentage of students maintaining full participation in classroom learning to 95%, how, how are you measuring that?
So we have, we have a lot of students and they're going to give us some of that data collection piece. That's part of what they're going to work with us on. So when they come, we're actually meeting with them this Friday morning. They'll look at Mrs. Esip, our school nurse, does a great job. If how many students come down, I've got a stomach ache, I've got a headache, right? So there's that time on learning. So we're going to look at all the different environments and see how many students are coming out of class and what we're putting in place to have positive environment within the classroom so that we see less of that. So that will help us identify that Friday morning and see what our base number really is. Great question.
That is a great question.
For goal number three, this is a district-wide goal. And it's all around our communication as a district, which is. as a district, which is something, of course, that is extremely important to all of us. Because this is a district-wide goal, Assistant Superintendent Warren will be discussing this on the whole once we are all done with our presentations. Any other questions for Warren?
It's amazing. Gosh, so detailed. Thank you so much, both of you. Ms. Colvert?
How are you? Dr. Jo, I'm also on the summary from last year. So going into this year, it was actually interesting to look at the goals set from last year because when I worked on this last year, I was brand-new to the district. So I was still learning a lot of what had been put in place in the past, analyzing data and all of that. So when we took a look at the goals we put in place, you'll see the first one is building community. We actually looked at building a baseline for the new administration. So Ellen Trock and I, we're both new. Lisa Dix had been working in the building previously, but we wanted to have a baseline of the school culture as a collective goal. So we actually took the entire year to gather a variety of data. So we had surveys that we had conducted. We have, what we utilize is SWISS, which we'll talk about SWISS when we get to another data piece, which is our student behavior referrals. We also have PVS incentives and things of that nature. And so the MTSS team, along with Ellen and I, worked to gather all of that data to then really drive a plan moving forward, which we're going to come talk about within these goals. So that was our Goal Number One. Our Goal Number Two and Goal Number Three focused around MCAS scores and the proficiency of our students meeting and exceeding MCAS. So our second goal was around our ELA MCAS scores. And it's interesting, again, to look back at not having the knowledge of the benchmarks that we had utilized when I was writing this goal and then looking at the data that we presented at the end of the year. Our students performed very highly on our benchmarks when we presented. And with that, we wanted to see that 80% of our students met or exceeded expectations on MCAS. I will say, we didn't quite meet that goal. We are still, we just received the embargo, un-embargo, I should say, MCAS data. So we are going through it, but one of the quick highlights that I was able to notice is a data point in MCAS is student growth percentile. And so that's really looking at the students themselves and how they've grown through the years. And I'm very proud to say, at a quick glance, we were in over the 50th percentile. So we outperformed 50% of the students in that area. So that's really, really proud. I'm very proud of that work. We do have more work to do. I understand that, which is going to kind of get us to the next goals, but that would actually be both Goals Two and Three from last year. Goal Two was for ELA, and then Goal Three was for math. But similarly, we didn't quite meet that target, but both of them had really strong, I feel, very strong SGP for the student performance from grades three and four and four to five. So we're very happy with that. I'm going to turn it over. Goal Number One to Mrs. Dix. Those data is around tier-one instruction. Then we'll let you go.
And if I could interject for a minute, again, especially for our newer school community members, we have a philosophy that 80% of your students should be performing at or above grade level 80% of the time. It's a hard goal to reach. We know that. And we know we might not get there in one year, clearly, but we think it's important to aim that high because our kids deserve it. So you'll see 80% on here. It's a research-based, that once you do all these things and you keep moving in that direction over time, I believe we're going to get there before I retire. Hopefully, much sooner than that. So when you hear that we didn't get there yet, we knew we were pretty far away from those goals even last year, but it's nice to see, especially the student growth, because that means that year-over-year, kids are making more than one year's worth of gains. And that's really important.
I love that we have that high expectation, too. That's amazing. Yeah, love that.
So this is exactly how Goal One is written. We're looking for 80% proficiency in reading and math again this year, and the action steps are pretty similar to what I just talked about for Bourndale. One being that we're still working on creating and shaping that data culture in more meaningful ways. We used to do the benchmarking probably five years ago when we started that, and then it just died. You know, we just gave the test and done. But we're doing more and more during Common Planning and discussions with the smaller committees to really make that information come to life and work best for our students so that we can provide that engaging, rigorous, standards-aligned learning experiences for all of our students pre-CADAs at grade, even though pre-CADAs don't take benchmarks. We're also going to continue to make changes and streamline the benchmarking process. It used to take a very long time. We used to give tests that really didn't give us the kind of information that helped us make the best decisions moving forward. And so we spent some time in an elementary math committee last year, creating benchmarks that fit what we, fit Eureka Math, which is what we use, the curriculum that we use, and then making a benchmark that will cover everything the standards require us to cover rather than taking some canned program assessment and trying to make it fit what we're teaching. So a lot of work was done on that, so we're going to use that this year as an action step for this goal. We have CPT back again. There's opportunity within that time, Common Planning time, for professional development. We've got wind blocks back again, so we can start with the interventions. And we have dedicated literacy and math blocks, like I said before, so that we can have uninterrupted instruction time in literacy and math, and co-teaching again to pull in the special ed piece. And, I think, you know, I've got glasses in my hand. You'd think I'd put them on my hands. Yeah, so that's Goal One for BIS.
May I ask a question? The co-teaching, what does that look like?
Co-teaching is, maybe you recall when we had training around the RISE model?
Okay.
Deborah Harris was in district.
Yes, yes.
Maybe two years, was it?
I'm sure it's your total of three.
Three. Where she taught strategies for teaming up a special ed teacher with a general ed teacher and having that be sort of a seamless instruction model where you could walk into the classroom and not be able to pinpoint who the gen ed teacher is and who the special ed teacher is.
Okay, thank you.
Yep, so that's just a continuation of that training.
Nice. Thank you. That's awesome. Thank you so much.
And again, it's also philosophical. We think students learn best in the classroom with their peers, so instead of pulling them out to get specialized instruction, we're pushing the teacher in.
I used to get pulled out, yeah.
But you have to do a lot regarding scheduling, regarding so much, you know?
Yes, that's awesome.
It takes a lot of effort to happen, but we believe it's worthwhile.
I love that. That's awesome. I did, I got pulled out for special reading, like special.
And you probably missed a lot with the...
I did, and I was so embarrassed. I was embarrassed.
I got pulled too.
Did you? Okay, thank you, Carrie. Okay.
To that, one of the things that we will put in place, because we do have incredibly special ed teachers in cohorts or teams, I should say, with the general ed teachers, is the new master schedule with the 90-minute literacy and math block allows for more seamless movement and flow for all students. So it's, you know, it's really nice that, you know, students that are either getting an enrichment or an intervention, whether it be special ed or not special ed, it's kind of that seamless revolving door so you don't know.
It's so good, yes.
And it's nice to see that, you know, the students working with, you know, everyone's working on that.
Yes, that's awesome. So good. Thank you.
You're welcome. So for Goal Number Two, this is actually a goal that is kind of near and dear to my heart. With the goal from last year of kind of building a baseline of our community and culture at BIS, something that was, that came out is a lack of common language around students' ability to self-regulate and deal with kind of adverse situations, problem-solving, perseverance. And so what we want to do is to pilot a program called Zones of Regulation, which is, it's a CASL program that focuses on social-emotional learning competencies. And we are going to be rolling that out this current school year. Our MTSS team has taken on that job. And similar to BES, our goal is that 95% of our students are engaged in learning. And the way that we're going to monitor that is this SWISS data that I've mentioned, we collect when students have kind of an incident, and it could be off-task, it could be behavioral, it could be anything, and we're able to track that. We also have nurse data that we collect, attendance data, things of that nature. And through Zones of Regulation, we're going to be rolling out, through our wind block, once, we're in a six-day cycle, so once every six days, whole building kind of shut down, and we're doing an SCL lesson, so we're all doing the same lesson on that day, with the hopes of common language across the entire building that we can then embed into across the different settings of the school. So everybody will have a hand in kind of the implementation of Zones of Regulation. So there's going to be whole-building training, ongoing coaching through the PVI activity through the MTSS team. We're going to have monthly kind of incentives of identifying your zone you're in, so meaning what feeling you're having, what strategies you're going to utilize if you're, the red zone is when you're really angry, if you need to go back to the green zone so that you can focus on your task at hand, what strategy you're using. So this is something that we're going to be rolling up and really monitoring that data to see how engaged students are in class and really able to either maintain regulation or self-regulate when they become kind of overwhelmed, sad, angry, all the feelings, all the feelings that they all feel. I think that it will be a great way to not only be available for learning, but also for the social pieces that kind of work together.
Yes, absolutely.
So that is our goal that we'll be monitoring throughout the year.
Oh, that's awesome. Thank you.
I have a question on that one. So they're going to learn all of the tools to regulate?
They're going to, I'm sorry.
They're going to learn all of the tools that they can take with them throughout their school career to regulate?
Yes.
Wonderful. I know, that's great.
Even the adults.
Yeah, that's great. That's great.
Yeah, so it is a building block. I mean, we start by identifying the different feelings that you can have, and then it goes into how does your body feel when you're angry, and you get like hot, you make like fists, things of that nature. And then the tools, each, everybody uses a different tool. Different tools work for different feelings, and then you're building your own toolbox so that when you get to high school and beyond, you don't say something that you then can't take back at a meeting.
Yes.
And you're able to regulate your emotions.
That's so important. So glad to hear that.
You can join us on a day one and a day two.
I'm sorry, I need to take back when I just told you all the, pulled out of reading.
The most important piece that we teach them is we're all human. And you know, if I go in a, you know, Mrs. Colvert says something in a meeting that's in her mind, then she doesn't able to regulate.
Yes.
Well, that's great.
I think it's amazing. Oh, my gosh. And how do you measure this? Did you already?
So a couple of different ways. We have, kind of like Dr. Jo said, I'm a data junkie, so we've got data sheets that we will track, the SWISS data. So SWISS has its own data system, but we're also going to track it on these individual homeroom sheets. The nurse, Nurse Jess, does an amazing job with, she also has a role in our MTSS, so she's using the same language, the same tools when the students come down to identify, are you sick, or are you nervous about your math test, or do you not want to do math? So we're going to track that data as well to see how often the students are in class. And SWISS does a really nice job. It breaks down the students, you know, our goal is 95%, but the RTI MTSS model is 85% of students kind of are successful with that tier-one, and then we build supports from there. So we're going to track kind of cross-sections of data through the MTSS team.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Thank you. Yes, thank you. Please don't tell Max while that. Thank you very much.
So next we have...
Ms. Slaboda. Yes, Bourne Middle School? Ms. Slaboda, right? That's how you pronounce it? Okay, Slaboda, yes.
Okay, so Jessie and I are going to co-present the Bourne Middle School's plan. So last year, Goals One and Two for Bourne Middle School were really focused on MCAS. 80% of students will meet or exceed expectations. So Goal One was specific to math, and Goal Two was specific to ELA. As Dr. Jo said, 80% meeting or exceeding is a really high bar, but I do think that we had some wins to celebrate at the middle school.
Right, so across the board, we grew in terms of the percentage of students meeting and exceeding expectations. The middle school took, you know, a really specific focus in on, we did some really good data dives last year, and Mrs. Mourning, you know, supported the score better than the middle school last year. But the really big wins are in our SGP's and our growth percentages. And again, that's comparing our kiddos to similar kiddos in the state, right? Who are getting the same kind of scores. And so the SGP's that you'll see later on when we talk about our first goal for this coming year, just the growth percentiles were really high, and we have like a really high expectation that we're going to stay there this year. And we just want to call out that in looking, since the data was all released, our grade eight math teachers, percentage-wise, had a higher percentage of meeting and exceeding students than the state did. And so that was, that was pretty impressive.
Wow, that's great.
And they caught me on their way out in some other towns on the Cape, where we will dive into that another time. So super proud of them and the hard work that they did. Our third goal was promoting equity, and it was around school culture, sense of belonging, really using engaging instructional strategies to reduce disciplinary referrals. So the vocal data that I looked at still shows strong sense of belonging. We weren't quite there hitting the goal, which I think just shows that we need to do a little root cause analysis, and so this is directly tied into Goal Two of our set for next year.
So as I mentioned, our first goal, again, keeping that 80% goal of meeting and exceeding expectations, that's always the goal that we want to reach and keep aspiring for. We do really want to focus in on student growth percentile. And again, as I explained, the way that data is measured is our students and their scores from their previous MCAS are compared to other students all across the state. And then when the students take the MCAS this year, their growth is ranked against all of those students. So of course, you want to be in the highest percentile possible. For our meeting and exceeding students, our goal is that their growth is typical, falling in the 40% to 60% range. And then for students that are, they're performing as partially meeting or not meeting expectations, if their SGP's can be in the 60% and even 70% or higher, they have a chance over two to three years. So think about entering Bourne Middle School as a sixth grader and leaving as an eighth grader. They have a chance over those few years to get caught up. And so that's really where we're putting our goals. And again, looking at our SGP's from last year's data, I'm very excited about the potential for what we can see and what we can do this year.
So can I just ask, as far as the growth that you see, but yet it doesn't correlate with the actual MCAS scores for ELA and math? Like, where's the, like...
So a student can have a high SGP. A student can have, say, a 70, and still fall in partially meeting expectations because of where they started from last year and previously. So you could also have students that meet and exceed expectations whose SGP's are lower because they're being compared to kids like who get like scores as them.
There's not as much room to grow if you're on the path. Right. So we look at achievement. The achievement scores count, right? And we want, we want to be in those high achievement places, but then there's also a student, an individual student growth score. So when you all get your letters, when they come home, you'll be able to see your child. And I always say, really look at the growth, because that's how hard they worked over the course of that year. We haven't traditionally been a district that's had as high achievement as we like. That's creeping up as well, but that's a year-over-year where they count. The last year and a little piece of the year before is just a big statistical thing. The last year and a little piece of the year before, it's just a big statistical thing. But we saw some, some growth there in our achievement scores. But what we're really seeing, we're really excited about, we can't tell, is that we're seeing almost all of our kiddos had high growth scores. That means they're catching up. They're doing more than a year's worth of work, and they're able to kind of pull up into grade level. So if we just keep this up for a few years, we'll start to get into those high achievements for all the kids.
I was going to mention something too. It's interesting what you just said about their own individual student growth. Because of the MCAS not being a requirement anymore, I think that's a very important point for the students when they're sitting down to take these tests, that they're hearing aren't really, you know, don't hold as much weight anymore. The individual student goal for themselves, that might give them, you know, the kids who might be set back a little bit. You know, to be like, you know, I want to see how much better I can do. And if they have that mindset, maybe that would. I don't know, I just thought about that when you said that.
I do want to bounce it back over to these guys, because the one thing that I saw BMS do really well last year is individual student goals for our benchmarks. So benchmarks happen three times a year. They're aligned to the standards. So the kids really were trying to, you know, get better at individual standards and what have you, and I think that made the difference.
Yeah, that's awesome.
Because we had, we're pretty happy with the growth in achievement and in student growth for BMS last year.
And so in terms of the action steps, it's, it's a nice balance of responsibility, again, across the building. So providing good professional development for teachers, providing feedback to teachers and walkthroughs, that's, you know, administrative part of that. And then in, a lot of my role is working with teachers in, you know, the curriculum alignment piece, following a spoken sequence for classes that are taught by a bunch of different educators, lesson planning, working hard towards meeting the needs of students, looking at student engagement, student discourse, things like that. So as you see through the action plan, it's a nice balance of responsibility.
Any questions on the first goal?
That sounds great.
Yep, yep. So Goal Two, similar to the other schools, is around culture and wellness. So Goal Two at the middle school this year is that we will implement a comprehensive, culturally responsive, social-emotional learning curriculum to ensure all students feel seen, safe, and supported. So we will be an action step, part of a major resource, even looking at SEL curriculum and identifying one for the middle school. And then similar to Goal One is really building capacity with staff on providing some professional development on how they implement that curriculum. I think one thing that we talked a lot about at the middle school, similar to what Ina Wall was saying, is really focusing on strong Tier One, and that's not just academic, it's also social-emotional, which should capture 85% of the students. For those students that it doesn't capture, we will have a tiered system of support. So Tier Two will capture another like 10 to 15%, and there may be five-ish percent who don't respond to that. So I think that's really important. We are trying to align with the high school. We are going to administer our own survey in October and May to measure student sense of belonging. We looked at a curriculum today that had its own benchmarks and explicit instruction. So I'm excited about that work and bringing that to the middle school this year, because I believe that students need to be in a place to learn before the other stuff can happen.
Yes.
So that's Goal Two, and Goal Three is communication, similar to everyone else. So I don't know if you have any other questions for Jessie or me?
I think it sounds great, yeah.
Thank you.
It sounds awesome. Thank you.
Thanks.
All right. The high school, Dr. McQuire.
Hey, everybody, good evening.
Good evening.
Good evening. So our first goal from last year was really around that building community, which is all about setting our expectations high for students and families, building our relationships with our students, and giving them the support to come into the building, to feel a sense of belonging, to feel welcomed, and, and really arrive here ready to learn. So over the past couple of years, we've really been working to attack those numbers in the chronic absence and chronic tardy categories. So we have seen really nice growth, steady growth in that area, bringing our, our kids into school, ready to learn, on time, and working with students and families and saying, hey, if something's challenging you or prohibiting you from, from getting here, let's partner on that. Let's talk about it, let's face it head-on, let's get into the building. Once we get here, let us help you and let's work together. So our chronic absence numbers have declined, our tardiness have declined, and our average daily attendance has gone up a bit. As part of this work, it's how do we gauge how our students feel about being here? And the vocal survey is a statewide assessment. It's given one time in 10th grade after the math MCAS. And we really wanted a little more information than that. So we did partner with the middle school over a couple of years and developed a survey to talk about how do we feel about the culture and climate of the building, how do we feel about sense of belonging? And we administered that survey at the high school for the first time in the spring. So that's something that we can start to build that longitudinal data, look at the transition from middle school to high school, and really meet our students' needs where they're telling us that they're at. So we'll start to administer that twice a year. In our second goal, we're always looking to increase our opportunities for students to engage, right? College and career readiness is, is the, is what the goal is all about, and broadening our, our pathways and our programs and our options for kids so that we can meet them where their interest levels are, and they can explore and grow across college and career opportunities. So in the past year, we applied for and received the Innovation Career Pathway in Computer Science Information Pathway. We applied for the Manufacturing, which is Engineering and Technology Planning Grant. So we're working on that application to, for that designation. We received the Early College Planning Grant and have developed a wonderful working partnership with Mass Maritime. We're in the process of applying for that early college designation now. And we have our two students over there piloting and reporting that things are going just so, so well for them. We're exploring a Chapter 74 CTE program for graphic design and digital communications. And we're also working with Cape Cod Community College on dual enrollment opportunities, specifically in the areas of business and then American Sign Language. So we can develop articulations, agreements with them by showing them our curriculum and our assessments, that what we're doing here matches what they're offering through their core syllabi at the college. And upon successful completion here, students will earn a passing grade on a 4C's transcript. So we're, we're working on those, those courses right now. For Goal Three.
Sure. So again, similar to the other buildings where students take the MCAS, we have our goal of 80% meeting or exceeding expectations. We had pockets of growth and pockets of success, I think, across our ELA math and biology results coming in. The interesting thing, as Carrie mentioned, is there was, you know, it is not a graduation requirement anymore, and, and there was a lot of curiosity amongst our staff as to what that would look like. And so as the data becomes released and we start to see, again, our results and other local high schools and how those students did, I do feel like you had a sense at a principal meeting that, that data had dipped. And it's interesting how we're starting to compare to other high schools where we were success, like, it's, it's kind of all over the place. And it's an interesting thing that, at our staff, we're already digging into, again, our curriculum discussions, but then also about like, how do we still promote that this is important in terms of accountability and things like that? So that's part of the work that we'll talk about, right, in Goal One. So again, teachers, so thinking about our Goal One for this coming year, teachers and support staff will strengthen Tier One instruction, again, focusing on student discourse and engagement, measured by the results of the MCAS. And very similar to the middle school, a nice balanced action plan of responsibility across administration and, and teaching staff.
For the second goal, we are still looking at that culture and wellness. We want to make sure that we continue to build the, the climate, the inclusivity and the connection of our students coming into the high school and throughout their stay here, that we build the participation and engagement of, in the learning process of our students, student engagement, student discourse, that they are equal partners with our, with their teachers, with our staff, and that we, they have the reason and the want to come here. So that, that culture survey is, is informative to that process. So we are looking to continue to lower those numbers on the absenteeism and the tardiness. We want to get those under 10% is our target. It's super ambitious, but we are really working with our students on why it is so important to be here, and then really starting to build and respond to the needs of our students through the culture and vocal surveys. Any questions?
I just love what you guys are doing. You just, the kids probably get the, are, are getting the message that they're so wanted and you really care, you know? I just love that. I, I love it. So thank you.
And you know, in the context of the conversations we're having here, does eighth grade move up? Do we, you know, do we configure our buildings? It's not beyond us to say, we want every student to feel that excitement, that connection, that belonging, that safety, and that we love our students just as much at the high school level as you do when the little ones come in.
Yes.
And that is not lost on us as secondary educators, that the connection to the adults here is one of the most beautiful things that we see on a daily basis.
I've witnessed it, yep.
You know, I had the opportunity to take Zoe to the Harvard Book Award Breakfast. I'm going to brag a little bit this morning. So over 250 people in the room, and we just had really nice conversations about the educators who helped her get here, and, and who helped her over the years of school. And that's so special, and we have to nurture and honor that in everything that we do. So it's about academics, it's about belonging, it's about the experience, and all of that at the end of the day is about the people.
Absolutely. You guys are, it's knocking it out of the park with that. Thank you.
I have a quick question about dual enrollment. Is that something that Born is already doing? The dual enrollment with Cape Cod Community College?
So students can engage in dual enrollment through 4Cs with us. Typically, that has looked like you go to 4Cs for a semester or two and take classes on that campus. So that's one way to do dual enrollment. And we had two students graduate last year who did that, for example, seniors, and that's, and that's an option. With the community college being free, it's a great option, where years ago, families would pay for that out of pocket and you would go. Now there is no, no costs associated with it. So it's a really nice option. There still are born high school students, they graduate with us, but they get both credits at the same time. The articulations that we're working on are for classes that our born high school staff are teaching, upper-level business classes. And you know, we're piloting the AP Business Principles course, for example, American Sign Language. That's something that we do that's special, that 4Cs has a whole, you know, department faculty that's teaching ASL. Why couldn't our students in ASL III or IV get that, earn that college credit? So those are the courses we're working on with the 4Cs faculty, with their deans, and their, both the language department and the business department to, to, they certify your course for a couple of years, once you go through that process with them. And, and again, with that successful completion, every kid walks out with the 4C's transcript that has their credits.
So something I want to bring to your attention, I'm not sure if, if anybody here is aware, but when kids do dual enrollment through Upper Cape, they do have to pay for classes. So I didn't realize, that was my next question, is are we paying for classes doing dual enrollment with 4Cs? Because my nephew's doing that right now through Upper Cape, and they have to pay quite a hefty sum to go do dual enrollment.
Wow.
Yeah, that's, it's interesting.
Wow, that's something.
I want to say 2,500 to, I don't know if he paid 2,500, or my sister agreed to pay 2,500, or if it was 2,500 total. I know he had to pay half, whatever they were doing.
And then to further that conversation with the early college partnership with Mass Maritime, our kids are over there getting 13 and a half credits this semester.
Wow.
You know what a credit costs. That's part of the, you know, the program, is that they're getting their books, their lunch pass, their, their credits, is all free to the families, to, to the students for early college.
That's amazing.
Unbelievable, yeah.
That's a pretty good deal as well.
Yeah, it's something that we should probably, as a district, mention to parents that, you know, if they are going to do enrollment through Born, they're not paying extra to do that. So it's important, it's, you know, huge for a lot of families.
And the other piece to that, it's such a multi-layered piece. We have so many AP classes that, again, if you, as everyone knows who's taken an AP course, you take the test, if the test is high enough and the college accepts it, you get that credit automatically. Like, I AP'd out of, you know, both semesters of English, I didn't have to take English in college, I was a music major. So, you know, that's a really great thing for kids who want to end, you know, end their college, first college career, because I have a lot of them, in three years. You can kind of fast-track depending on the APs. On the flip side, what's great about early college, about the dual enrollment articulation and the early college, those credits will transfer anywhere. So you don't have to take another test. You have earned those credits, you even now have a transcript that has college credits. So it's actually a lot of really cool benefits for students who kind of want to go everywhere. Just because you're in an early college with Mass Maritime, you don't have to enroll in Mass Maritime. That's a Massachusetts public school, and that will transfer anywhere. So it's a pretty cool new option. We're excited about all of it.
You guys are doing very well. Thank you. Great, yeah, amazing.
So now we turn it over to Christine, who's going to talk about our communication, because it is the same goal for each of the four SIPs. Goal Three is communication is aligned very, very tightly with our bigger strategic plan.
Yeah, so before I dive into the goals specifically, I think, first of all, I just want to acknowledge all the work that the principals and the directors did on their goals. An incredible amount of work, both diving into the data to look at previous years, but also to look at the data to set the goals, and just some really excellent work going on. So I want to acknowledge that. And I, and they've been a big part of this goal as well. I just, they all have the shared goal, so we thought it would be a little more economical time-wise for one person to present it. We came out of, one of the things that came out loud and clear, if you were part of the strategic planning last year, was that caretakers, parents and caregivers feel that communication is maybe not consistent from school to school, not clear, not really sure where to get information. And I think, having been in the principal's seat, you're like, I'm so clear. But that is not maybe what people are feeling. So we, as a district, started, and I can't take any credit for it, Chris Oliver brought us Parentsware, which is a unified communication tool, and it really pulled together like so many different components, whether it be email, whether it be remind, whether it be ClassDojo, whether it be, you know, texting in some cases for athletes, things like that, that is all brought together into one place. So looking at that, we now have this district goal of really creating and implementing communication methods that are effective and, and parents are receiving effectively. And so the goal is that caregivers will report a clear understanding of communication methods, and that the communication will be effective for parents and caregivers, and community, community members at times as well. So we have a number of action steps, including some surveys. We feel you've been surveyed out right now, so we'll be holding off on the communication surveys, but those will be coming. And that, you know, I think also to just look to, back to the principals, they've done a lot of work already aligning, you know, every week they're sending newsletters. Those newsletters will actually be also brought into the Parentsware under that umbrella as well. But all of our communication is, is now under Parentsware. We already, today, actually, Communications Director Oliver was able to share quite a bit of data.
I'll be sharing those stats out of my report.
From Parentsware, great. So I think Parentsware has made this goal quite attainable for us, I think, is, is really the bottom line, and just, so we have a lot of action steps around kind of the ways that we all will function similarly, so that communication can be received loud and clear. And I think Parentsware as a tool is really helpful to that, so.
And if I could just interject?
Please do.
This morning, one of the things that we, a lot of the feedback that we got from our strategic planning and the surveys that we received, was that parents were, while they said, yes, we're communicating, we're communicating a lot, there was some frustration level that they were communicating through multiple different platforms. At, at the classroom level, especially if they had multiple students in the district, one teacher in, Borndale might be using this application or this app, this method of communication, while the middle school or high school student, another teacher might be using a different method of communication. And then we obviously have communication going out at the school and district level. So I, I think to Mrs. Bornings' point, it just brings it all together and centralizes.
And I think the piece that I think is really imperative as well is that it pulls in the older students into the communication method. the older students into the communication method as well, so that we're able to make sure that the communication with students in their after-school activities and their sports is really effective, and that everybody's getting that equitably as well, because I know, you know, that can be challenging, depending on what they have as their communication tools also, so. Okay, so, we'll be seeing more for sure throughout the year, but I think we are already well on our way to this goal with this communication tool.
Sounds great. Thank you very much. Budget and facilities update.
Did you want, did you want to take the vote now on these four SIPs?
Sure, sure.
Do we do them individually, or as? So, I'll make a motion to approve the SIP for Bourndale Elementary School.
Second. Is there a second? Okay. All in favor, sorry, I'm just learning all this now, you guys. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any, anyone opposed? No? Any abstentions? That's the same thing though, right?
No.
You're not, okay, okay. Okay, the motion passes unanimously. Thank you.
I move to approve the SIP for Born Intermediate School.
Okay, thank you.
Second.
All right, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, say no. Any abstentions? Nope. The motion passes unanimously.
I move to approve the SIP for Born Middle School.
Second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All, any abstentions? No. Opposed, say no. The motion passes unanimously. Thank you, I'll get this down, you guys, sorry about that.
We have one more. Move to approve the SIP for Born High School. Second.
Okay, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Okay, all those opposed, say no. No. Any abstentions? Nope. The motion passes unanimously. Thank you.
So, teaching and learning. We're keeping our reports short.
Oh, I thought that was what you, just when you introduced.
I was just wrapping up, so each of the SIPs had that same shared goal.
I see, okay, okay. Thank you, all right.
And this is, yeah, work on keeping this brief. So, September, we had a really positive start to the school year, as I think you've heard lots about. Consistently seeing really high-quality, engaging instruction in the classrooms, and so just excited to see that continue. Our staff supported outstanding back-to-school nights at our elementary and middle schools, and parent-teacher conferences are tomorrow night at VHS. Which are facilitated through Parent Square, I believe, so that's a nice connection. And as you heard, in each of the SIP presentations, that first round of benchmarking is complete in all buildings, with win groups having been started for all our students. Benchmarking is really a team lift, with educators and administrators all kind of working together to get that done, and so we thank them for that. As you heard, the MCAS results were unembargoed on Monday, and so you will, you've heard a little bit about some of the wins that we've had in the SIP presentations. We will be providing a more comprehensive report at, at our November meeting with regards to MCAS, but parents and families should be looking for the individual student reports that will be mailed out on next Friday, October 10th. And those have a lot of information right in them that parents can get about their own students' work. We'll be celebrating, we are celebrating Blue Star Week across the district this week, welcoming our military families to Born, and honoring the service and sacrifice that military students and their families make, and we do have a proclamation to share later in the evening. Many of our educators, and I think this really speaks, and you heard quite a bit about it in the SIP, but it really is one of the underpinnings of all of our school improvement plans and many of the components, is the professional learning. Our educators have been engaged in a ton of professional learning already throughout this month. Writing PD, math PD with Allison Mallor, science, co-teaching, we've had a number of consultants in to work with, a large range of staff members. I really want to thank our curriculum directors, Jessie Clements and Lisa Dix, for all of their work coordinating that. Our principals and our AAs ensure that there is coverage for our staff members to be able to participate in that, and our staff in particular, just really for truly engaging in that work, and not only engaging in the trainings, but also applying it into their practice regularly. So important. Also, under the PD umbrella, our Instructional Council met this month, it's a new committee related to professional learning in the district, set a number of short and long-term goals. And our focus areas are developing a short-range PD plan, developing a long-range, multi-year PD plan, building sustaining practices around our professional learning, and really looking at and honing our curriculum mapping process, so we're excited to dig into that. And all of our educators will be engaging in a day of PD on, on the 10th, Friday the 10th, which is not a school day, if you're listening out there. And we have a wide range of PD opportunities scheduled, and are very excited that many of our Unified Arts teachers are able to participate in the All Cape Day with colleagues from across the Cape that also, so art teachers coming together, music teachers coming together. It's a really nice opportunity for people who don't always get subject-specific PD. And that is it.
Very nice. Thank you, Mrs. Boring. Budget and facilities, Mr. Jordan Geist, please.
Thank you. Just for a quick note, that, you know, the government shut down, I guess last night, midnight, or this morning, 11:01. And I just want to let everyone know that we did get a message from the USDA, went out to all the states, that the funding is in place for the school lunch and breakfast program through October, so there's nothing to worry about at this point with, with the shutdown. So that's good news.
Yeah, that's good news.
The last time this happened, there was some concerns that family members expressed, it was a year or two ago, and were facing similar situations, so I just wanted to get up in front of that, that those problems will be continuing for the foreseeable future. Also, another reminder that town meeting is October 20th. We have two articles up for vote, the wastewater treatment plant repairs, and the middle school roof design, so please go out and vote. That middle school roof is the first step, the design is the first step in that MSDA process that we talked about last time, and their board will be voting at the end of this month as well. And just a huge shout-out to the custodians to close. When I, when I interview potential candidates, my first statement to them is I believe custodians are the most, one of the most important positions in the district, and I ask the candidate to try to explain my thinking around that, and if they can do a halfway decent job of talking about the importance of keeping a building clean and safe and first impressions, and I basically hire them, so.
That's awesome.
They're an integral role.
Yep.
So, I just want to sincerely thank them for all that they do behind the scenes. That's it, my report.
Thank you very much. Technology update.
Thank you. Good evening, everyone. So it's been an extremely busy September in the technology department, as we continue to replace staff computers and technology in the classrooms. As is typical for the start of school, we were responding to many, many technology ticket requests from faculty and staff across the district. Our new digital technology integration specialist, John Troy, is hit the ground running and is assisting teachers regularly. Both John and Nick, who is our systems administrator, have been non-stop throughout September, supporting the technology needs of our faculty and staff. Also, just a big shout-out to Teresa Vicente, who is our data magician, and helps staff with everything Power School and state reporting related. Just a quick update on security. We are continuing to upgrade and expand our security measures across the district. While I can't go into detail, this does include replacing older cameras, testing our interoperability with the Born Police Department, and making sure common sense security practices are taking place throughout the district. I'd like to thank Chief ESIP and our SROs for continuing to work with us to strengthen our security practices and communication systems. Onto Parent Square. Parent Square is continuing to grow in popularity. I've got a few fun facts to share with all of you. We now have a total of 1,308 registered users on the platform, out of a total of 2,320. So we're getting there, over, over halfway. 720 parents, or 36% of parents, have downloaded the app on their phones. 488 parents, or 24%, have opted to receive text messages. 1,536, or 76, parents have opted to receive emails. Staff have created 450 unique posts, and there have been 3,442 direct messages between staff and caregivers, going back and forth, that instant messaging feature. Our high school staff, as Mrs. Boring had alluded to, are even using it to send out parent-teacher meeting sign-ups. And then finally, I was just notified on Monday that my category, my E-Rate Category II grant application was approved for a total committed amount of $38,684. As you may know, this is a cost-share grant, with the district paying 20%, or $9,671, and the E-Rate program paying $38,684. This will fund replacing the intermediate school Wi-Fi and bring them onto the same system as the rest of the district. Also includes the funding of service contracts for some of our network equipment, and it also will allow us to have a Tier Three or high-level network engineer on retainer for the school year. And that is my report.
I have a question, as far as the cameras are concerned. Do we have them on the fields, like the outside, like on the outside of schools?
We have, I can.
Facing the fields.
Yeah, I can share with you that we, we have them on the exterior of the school facing that.
Like the middle school facing that.
However, I do have, I am working on, that's something I didn't include here, I am working on some budgetary numbers to update and upgrade our camera system, mainly at Bourndale, but also across the entire district. That'll be a capital outlay item that will be brought to you at the next meeting, Mr. Geist. So I'm working on, so there'll be certainly some expanded coverage that I'm looking at.
Okay, and then would that include also the parking lot for the high schoolers as well, or is?
We can't tell you where.
Yeah. Walking around the high school, you could look.
Okay, all right, I'll do that.
We have good coverage in many places. This would be to upgrade cameras, we can get the better models, you know, get wider mirrors. We're always doing, doing that.
Yes, okay, thank you very much.
Not to be cagey, but we don't want the bad news here.
No, I know, okay, everybody, they are on the corner of.
Yeah, I was being very vague on our.
Yes, yeah, and here I am wanting to give you, yeah, that was silly. Okay, thank you so much, Mr. Oliver.
You're welcome.
All righty, last but not least, Student Services and Special Education, Mrs. Donahue.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Staff and students are settling into routines, and service delivery schedules are moving forward. The games have been worked out, which is common in the first couple of days of September. Students are meeting with their special education teachers and clinicians in a variety of ways, from co-teaching to push-in services and pull-out, and collaboration among colleagues. The first round of professional development regarding the tiered focus monitoring took place at each of the buildings, with positive feedback from all. The teams reviewed the new DESI guidelines on the mandated timelines, and discussed strategies on how to meet compliance. All acknowledged it will truly be a team effort to meet some of these new compliance mandates, but we're in it. And in addition, the teams reviewed an evaluation report template that allows for kind of a consistent presentation of our diagnostic findings, while also providing some flexibility for individualization, depending on the discipline that's reporting out. So just trying to create a little bit more uniform template for our eval reporting. The department has agreed to trial this format, and then come together in a few months for some feedback, and if it needs to be tweaked further. But all of these items are helping us move forward with our corrective action plan.
Thank you very much. All righty, so announcements and correspondence. I am going to read to you, like Mrs. Boring said, the Blue Star Week proclamation. Whereas Blue Star Families seeks to empower military families by connecting them with their neighbors, individuals, and organizations to create vibrant communities of mutual support. Whereas Blue Star Families annually designates the week beginning the fourth Saturday in September and concluding eight, eight days thereafter as Blue Star Welcome Week. Whereas during the week, we recognize 600, the 600,000 military families who move to new communities each year. Whereas only 39% of military family respondents to the 2,224 Military Family Lifestyle Survey reported that they feel a sense of belonging to their local civilian community, whereas a sense of belonging is essential to the well-being and readiness of military families. Whereas we commit to ensuring that military and veteran families feel a strong sense of belonging to their local civilian communities. Whereas we express gratitude for the sacrifices made by service members and their families. Whereas all four of Born Public Schools were designated as Purple Star Schools in 2024 by the Military Interstate Children's Compact and the Mass Department of Elementary and Secondary Education for public schools who show a strong commitment to supporting military-connected students and their families. Whereas we recognize community members nationwide to do their part and welcome military and veteran families into their communities. Now therefore, be it resolved that we, the Born Public Schools School Committee, do hereby proclaim September 27th through October 5th, 2025, as Blue Star Welcome Week in the Born Public Schools.
I mean, to vote to accept that.
Oh, okay, all righty.
I move to accept Blue Star Families Week proclamation.
And second?
Second.
Okay, is there any further discussion? All righty, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All those opposed, say no. Any abstentions?
Nope.
The motion passes unanimously. Thank you.
And well done. We'll keep moving on, you might hear a little bit about how we've celebrated so far.
Oh, it's so exciting, yes, yes.
It's so important as a military community for us to do this every year.
Yes.
So, Mrs. Donahue, you were going to tell us a little bit about September being recognized as Suicide Prevention Month. Normally we do this in September, but we have the big community forum, but that doesn't mean that we don't care about this every month.
So September is National Suicide Prevention Awareness Month, which is to obviously raise awareness and reduce stigma, and connect families with resources to hopefully promote hope and healing and support. So as you heard throughout the SIPs, all of the schools are committed to supporting the well-being of, of all of our students. So one of the ways we do that is through an organization called Hope Squad. So Hope Squad is very active at the high school, and it's about building connections. So they've had their first meeting already, and students are engaged in fundraising efforts, exploring ways to promote the message, including possibly decorating the Big Rock, which is always fun.
Oh.
Also looking at collaborating with the middle school, so bringing their awareness, continuing with an activity that they did last year, which was an appreciation station, where kids write notes to each other about with kindness and thoughts, and just knowing that they're supported. The Instagram page is being monitored by students to help promote the message, and they're sporting their Hope Squad gear every week to try and enlist other students to be engaged. So, it's through these efforts that, you know, we just want to support kids and families, and we have trained counselors available, and nurses and psychologists that always monitor students' behavior, and connect them with resources throughout the community. One other message that Hope Squad and all the schools promote is really the access to calling or texting 988, which is the suicide prevention hotline number. So, yeah, we have a lot of supports and resources going on, so.
That's awesome, that's so great.
Which continues, not just in September, it's all year round.
Yes, of course. So, a couple of questions there. What grades, how can you join, and what grade, grades are involved?
It's primarily at the high school.
Okay.
It's primarily at the high school, but they are reaching out down to the middle school, and they can reach out to any of the club members, they'll all be wearing their shirts on Wednesdays, and certainly reach out to any of the guidance counselors who can direct them in the right direction.
Okay, and there's no requirements or anything? No, they just want to have a good heart?
Yeah.
That's amazing. Thank you so much.
You're welcome.
Very, very important topic.
So we, we have our principals here to talk about things happening in their school, but also Mrs.
also Mrs. Boring will talk about our VPS Community Resource Fair first. My principals, go ahead and queue up if you'd like, in whatever order you'd like to talk about anything happening past president.
Just making sure, I will go first, but I'm just making sure Lisa is in here.
No, she's not.
Okay, perfect. Yeah, so Director Dix has been really key in pulling together an incredible group of community organizations for our third, fourth?
Third annual community resource-
Third, I believe.
Third Annual Community Resource Fair. It will be held on Thursday, October 16th, primarily in the VHS gym, but also there will be some speakers and events happening across the hall in the cafeteria. There will be raffles for visiting tables, and so we just really look forward to having everybody come out. We do have our district physician, Dr. Saluti, as a speaker, and also Jeff Riley, who is the former commissioner of DESI, as a speaker as well, on the topic of like AI and its use with students and schools. So a lot to offer, just from learning about different community organizations, but also to some learning for parents.
It's a lot of fun.
Oh, so fun.
Whole fun family.
Yeah, totally, it's so fun.
Get your face painted, it'll be a blast.
Are you painting this year?
I, if needed.
If needed, okay. Thank you, such a great event. Mrs. Carbonito, would you like to come up?
I would not.
Alright.
So you haven't heard enough of me tonight. So we had our red, white, and blue theme today for our Blue Star Family Week. One thing that we did this year was a welcome wall of stars for our families and it's been great, we still have names rolling in. We've also added families who were active duty, just to honor them. The kids love going by and seeing the names on the walls. So a big thank you to all of our families who served, have served, and then the sacrifices that the children make as well. It's really neat hearing them walk by and tell the stories, even at the young age of we have them, of, you know, how many times they've already moved or what that experience has been like, so it was really nice to meet them, feel welcome in their first month of school. We are wrapping up our Alice trainings at our school this week and we will be doing some drills next week. I think it's really important for us to know, to tell families that we have been welcoming those conversations back and forth of how that looks. It's just another part of our safety drills and conversations with students about how that isn't only necessary in school, but also outside of school to keep themselves safe. The kids have been great with those conversations. The most positive thing that comes out of that is, again, already in the first month of school, we really promote having as many trusted adults as possible. And to hear them talk about that and go around the school and be able to say how many people they already go to school with and that they go to, is really, again, a positive highlight and a tribute to the staff in the building. Next week, I know the high school will be probably talking about this, but we are participating in the Bourne Public School Spirit Week, so we always love supporting our incredible Bourne High School students and what they have going on, so we will be kicking off of all their themes next week. Thursday, we are partnering with the Bourne Fire Department to do our fire prevention and safety trainings with our students, so we are looking forward to having them in the building. Also on Thursday, we are having our family literacy night for our One School One book. That same afternoon, Thursday can be a very busy day at Bourne Dale, we have our Booster Thon Dance Fit fundraiser. We really appreciate everything of the families who have been already generously donating, that brings in field trips for us. We've been able to bring in so many more relevant real-world experience programs, it's our bug toast. Normally we're just kind of going out to our natural classroom, we've got a whole bug presentation, a little leery about that, but they stayed in one room. And none of them got away, so that was- On the 15th, as Miss Boring mentioned, that we have been wrapping up our benchmarking, so we're really excited. The next two weeks, we have been diving in, as I talked about with our school improvement plan, really focusing out on what the students need to start their school year off. So we will be kicking off our first round of win on the 15th. We get a little more aggravating because we have to also make sure those little bodies can get around the building. It takes a little getting used to that first time, but then it's amazing to watch how independent they get and how much they rise to that occasion, so that will be happening in a couple weeks. The week of the 20th is STEM Week, so stay tuned for details on that. And then on the 30th, we are excited, we have the best bus drivers around in the town of Bourne, that goes without saying, I think. Anybody who's driving behind a Bourne bus and sees the messages that they put behind, really, they just are absolutely amazing. So we are fortunate enough to partner with them every single year for trunk or treat. The community building gives us at least two spaces because Mrs. Donan brings a bus and they spend the day, they spend all their free time decorating it and going along with our theme, which I love them even more for. And then they stay to hand out candy and see the kids in a different light, so just a shout out to them, but also really fun event, so we love seeing our families come by and put the treat. Thank you.
That's awesome, thank you. Alright, Ms. Colbert.
So, starting with wrapping up September, we had a really busy, exciting September. It felt like a very long one, but it was chock full with a lot of excitement throughout that month. As Ms. Carbonito said, we have just wrapped up our benchmark testing and I have to say the kids worked really, really hard on their beginning of the year benchmark. And this data is going to help us to make instructional decisions for our tiered supports, both on re-level of our interventions and our enrichments. Despite the rain, VIS Booster Thon occurred last week and was a huge success. A tremendous thank you to our PTA for not only coordinating what would have been an outdoor event, but re-coordinating last minute when it was an indoor event. And I'm still in shock at the money that is raised through the Booster Thon. We raised over $23,000 with the help of families and caregivers that will go to our PTA, which ultimately will support field trips, enrichment activities. We have a new school store that we're going to be launching at VIS and a lot of support for the teachers, so we couldn't do it without the amazing PTA that we have and I'm incredibly grateful for them. I also need to say that we had one of the most heartwarming moments that I've experienced in all of my years of education. We welcomed home Staff Sergeant Jonathan Smith a few weeks ago, and not only did we get to welcome him home, but we were able to surprise his two children at VIS with them being reunited. We had to keep it a secret from everybody because not everybody keeps good secrets. So there was very few of us that knew that he was going to be coming. His wife had reached out, Ms. Smith had reached out to me, asking and not wanting to disrupt the school, and I said, "You've called the wrong people because I'm all about." So we were able to pull off a very quick whole school assembly where he was the guest of honor, where he entered the back. So if you haven't seen it on Facebook, please go on. I think I cried every single time I go on and watch it. It was truly amazing to see not only the kids, you know, his wife was there in the back watching, and then all of the teachers who just then broke them in tears as well, so.
The kids broke out in applause, it was amazing.
It truly was amazing, and all I kept thinking, you know, someone asked me how I had to cry because I was afraid I was going to mess up what I was doing, so you get very, very focused, but it was truly amazing. And the first thing out of Atlas's mouth was, "Do we get to get dismissed?" So that was wonderful. And really, you know, a way to launch into Blue Star Week, which, you know, having him there really drove home what our families go through when, you know, we have one supply to protect us every month over the year, so it truly is a family commitment and we are forever grateful for that. Similar to VES, we are keeping our Spirit Week to support the AGS and their homecoming and the phenomenal quote that will be on display, I was told, for homecoming. We have our Monster Mash, which is our Title I event that is going to be held October 15 from 5:30 to 7:00, and it is a spooky and fun-filled way to bring literacy alive for all of our children. I got to experience Winter Wonderland last year and Dr. Vogel definitely outdoes herself, so I'm excited to see what Monster Mash looks like. And finally, last but certainly not least, I was informed that this is the 32nd Annual All-Star Review that will be happening in February, so that is going to be held on February 6th and 7th. But a couple of dates for our families to know, on October 8th at 6:00 PM, at VIS is a mandatory parent meeting. And then on the 17th and 18th, there are auditions for students to come in and try out, and we're looking for a really exciting one coming in, winding down with Halloween, a parade that we done last year, so hopefully everyone can come in costumes and join us for a parade on the 31st.
Oh, that's awesome. May I ask you a question? How long does it take to plan that, what is that, that run, the Booster Thon?
So they, we met in August. The company that comes in really does a phenomenal job, yes. They do a phenomenal job organizing it, however behind the scenes are PTA coordinators. It was on a daily, they were coming into the school, making announcements, collecting any of the participation paperwork, giving out prizes.
Oh, I see.
I mean, they were there on a daily basis for the first, this was the third week of school for three weeks.
Right, that's a lot of money.
Yeah, it was, yeah.
That's amazing.
I agree.
Yeah, that's so great.
It was fun, and I was a little nervous with it being inside, but it was absolutely amazing.
That's great, thank you.
We ran, we danced, we sang.
Oh, that's awesome, thank you. Okay, the middle school, Slavato, Ms. Sablato, I have to get her-
Slavota.
So, I'm so sorry.
That's okay.
Slavota, Slavota, Ms. Sablato.
You're just calling Miss S.
Okay, can I please just call you Miss S? Thank you so much, thank you.
So also a really busy September at Bourne Middle School. September 29th is the halfway mark through term one, which is shocking and hard to believe, but clubs and activities are in full swing, after-school help is in full swing, and truly I'm impressed by the broad range of clubs at the middle school and activities, there is truly something for everyone. And I've said this before, that I really think if students leave at the end of the day and don't stay on Mondays, Tuesdays, and Thursdays, that we're not doing something right. We want them to stay and be connected. So you'll be seeing pictures of that in the newsletter, so that's exciting. Blue Star Week is happening, much like VIS, we have a welcome wall of stars in our lobby. You might have seen the Facebook post, we took a picture of all the students. We have students participating in morning announcements this week, just with recognition and appreciation. And this Friday is our Blue Star Spirit Day, so it's a blue-out day, so you can wear blue camo or military shirts, so we'll do that this Friday. October 10th is World Mental Health Day. We had our math consultant, Allison Mello, in working with our math teachers, so our school counselors took advantage of that, and so they pushed in on tough classes on strategies for managing stress, mental health awareness, and mental illness. Also Kate Conlon applied to K-Pet High for a grant, they're doing so many grants, so we could participate in the Yellow Tula Project, so if we get that grant, we will plant one yellow tula for every single student at Bourne Middle School, and it will bloom in the spring, which will align with, I think it's May, is mental health in the spring, so I'm hoping we get that grant. Much like VES, we did our Alice presentations to students, we will also do drills the week after we return from Indigenous Peoples Week guys. So let's see, we are also doing Spirit Week next week, and our eighth grade students will go to the high school for the pep rally on the night, so that would be really fun. Next week, our grade seven is going to Camp Burgess for a field trip, so I want to shout out PTA for helping to sponsor that. We have School Picture Day next week. We also have a couple of big fundraisers coming up at the middle school, so our Fall Book Fair is October 20th, October 24th, and our PTA spaghetti supper is happening on October 23rd from 6:00 to 7:30. We will have the book club open at 5:30 for a little preview, so hopefully we can get some more sales out of that. And then this is a little bit further up on November 13th, we have an author coming to visit, he'll be presenting care in the auditorium, so again, thank you to PTA for sponsoring that. So I'm working with Chris on a press release. We're really hoping to have parents come and community members come and see him speak, and that kicks off our One Book One School, which is the funnest hours this year. Oh, and the last thing is on October 17th, we're doing Step Up Day, I know the flyer will talk about that tomorrow.
Don't steal my thunder.
But it will be for grade six, seven, and eight. I think we've heard feedback that families make decisions early, so we wanted to create an opportunity, because it's not just day three that was going up, but at this point, I'll turn it over to you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. So there's definitely a through line here. We started with a message in our newsletter for Blue Star Welcome Week, and we have a little tree planned for our students in school. I'm not going to give that away, but we're just really happy to have 10 at the high school that we're working with this year. Our parent conferences, we hope will go off without a hitch tomorrow, but we were thrilled to use Parents Square for signups, teachers, and parents who have reported that signups went really well, so we'll see that through tomorrow. Next week, our seniors are taking the SATs. The college search and application process is underway, so students are working on their college essays and applications, getting their materials, their scores together, so this is like the last opportunity for them to put forward scores from here. On the Thursday next week, we have the Homecoming Pep Rally after some spirit days. We're really excited to welcome the eighth grade up, have them participate with us in a little bit of decorating and some spirited competition and fun in the gym, followed by year two of bringing back the tradition of homecoming floats. We have a superhero theme with Iron Man, Captain America, Spider-Man, and Batman. The game starts at 6:30 and would love for you to come out, that will happen at halftime last year. The crowd was just so appreciative of the work that our students and their advisors and families did to put those floats together. It's just so much fun and to see it pay off, it's a really neat night. There's no school for students the next day as it's the teacher in service, but they will be back that night to dance the night away at the NHS Homecoming Dance. We had a huge turnout last year and we're expecting to meet or exceed that, so we will get everybody in on Friday night for that. We do have Step Up Day that we're planning, as in years past. This is both a college and career exploratory day for our students and an opportunity for the middle schoolers to come up. So we run a number of sessions this year, they're really focused in the areas of some of our programs and courses and specialty areas that we're looking to promote within the high school. Those high-interest, hands-on activities are planned for sixth and seventh graders in the morning, and then our eighth graders, after they complete their UCT tour, will come up here and then be able to see what the high school has to offer by contrast. Our ninth grade is going to Camp Burgess for a day of team building, which really extends the curriculum in their freshman seminar class, the school-to-career class. Our grades 10 and 11 students are taking the PSAT in the morning, and then they're going to have a confidence course sponsored by the National Guard that's used to develop teamwork, collaboration, and just a ton of fun, so that will be hopefully great weather for them to do that outside. And our grade 12 students will be engaged in a day of service, either full day at their internship or in or around the high school. A lot of our seniors will work with our teachers on those activities for the sixth, seventh, and eighth graders, so we're really looking forward to that day, it's coming together. And then on the 21st, we're hosting an open house for our middle school parents with a college and career panel with some of our industry partners, a personalized tour of the high school, and then an opportunity to meet with our team leaders to learn about specific courses and curriculum here at the high school. And we're planning to share information out to families early next week. On the 22nd, DECA is hosting a bingo night in the cafeteria at 5:00 PM. They're getting ready for their fall season of competition. The Drama Department is hosting their Haunted House, which was a great success, on 10/29 at 5:00 PM. This Monday, our orientation leaders who attended freshman and transfer orientation will follow up with our win groups of freshmen and then specifically our transfer students as well, to share updated information about getting involved at the high school and all of the clubs we have to offer, who to contact, how to get involved, where they meet. So once they do that with our freshmen and transfers, we'll push that information out to the community at large as well. And then finally, I'd just like to call out that the high school is one of 17 schools in Massachusetts that was recognized as a national banner school for unified, based on our student leadership, unified sports, and whole school engagement criteria to promote- unified sports, and whole school engagement criteria to promote inclusion advocacy and respect. I want to thank K.T. Alexander for her work in the application process for that. But really, our students, our staff, our model peers, and our community at large for supporting just the programming and the growth and the inclusion of our students here at VHS. So we're really proud of that and we're grateful for K.T. to, for getting that accolade for us.
Thank you so much. Two, two quick question for you, sorry, I'm not going to be long. The football game, students can still get in free for the homecoming game next?
Students are able to attend any athletic event that is in regular season or the plays with, so our younger students with a parent or guardian chaperone. So a parent that comes, they get into all events for free.
Excellent.
Our high schoolers also get into all of our regular season events for free. So we want to make sure that our community is included. And that is extended to our retirees, our current staff, our administrators. We want to make sure that everybody knows that they're welcome, especially those who have dedicated so much, you know, service and time. And we'll also be reaching out to build a free-along-night opportunity for homecoming.
Awesome.
Next week. So that's going out this week before the weekend as well.
That's amazing, thank you. Alice training, is that like a fire drill now? Like, do, like, how?
Thank you for mentioning. So we're doing Alice as well.
How are we doing that?
This is that idea of that we want to protect our students and have them ready for, you know, any situation. They may barricade in a room, they may evacuate if that's a safe option. But based on the information that they're given at the time, our teacher leader in a room is going to make a decision about what the next steps will be, whether it's to run, to evacuate, to leave the building. Or the safest place is where we're at right now, based on the information we have. So we're going to make that as safe as possible. So they kind of work through those scenarios, talk through those.
Okay.
I think one of the important things, one of the important things about Alice training is that it emphasizes decision-making based on the information you have. And so certainly with middle school and older students, we can have conversations about, this is something that you might do at school, but it's also something you might do at a festival or, you know, a crowded event that you might be going to where you're being aware of your surroundings, being aware of the exits, being aware of the safety plan that you have with your people that you're out with.
Right.
If you're at the mall, are you being aware if you're at the movies, things like that.
Oh, that's so good.
Again, the drills are a little different than a fire drill where you're.
Well, I know it's not like a fire drill, but I just didn't know how they read them. Like, do they get really upset or are they pretty good?
No, I think we try to do them in a way that is, you know, really emphasizes conversation about what might be the best decision.
Okay, all right, that's so good.
And it's different at each level, clearly, to the younger kiddos. So we don't create a very realistic scenario, as in scare people. And so I would imagine they know it's a drill and they know that it's a scenario presented, because you just don't know what's going to happen. And so really, it's about listen to the adult that's there, the leader, make the best choice possible. But the more that we kind of talk about this, then hopefully the more comfortable kids will get, you know, with knowing how they'll react if it was a real situation.
And then a notice goes home on Parent Square, the one they have those. Yeah, awesome, thank you. Thank you very much, you guys.
All right, that finally comes out.
All right.
Superintendent's report.
All righty, okay, have a great night, you guys, thank you. All right, school committee, subcommittee, and district committee report. Curriculum Subcommittee.
We're meeting tomorrow, we're meeting tomorrow.
Oh, you're meeting tomorrow, okay, all righty, meeting tomorrow. Policy Sub.
Yes, so we had, I think we're actually doing a couple. Yeah. So, I mean, pretty much we covered some of the policies that we might need to do more research on to decide whether or not there's some out there that don't exist or aren't aligned with mask, you know, with the suggestions. I know there's a couple here that we're going to, one of them that was interesting that we talked about was like games of chances and the fundraising and raffles and things like that. And I know there was more work that we were doing from there. I don't know if you want to elaborate on those or.
No, you did a great job. There's still more to look into, but just as a fact, the raffle at the community and resource fair is completely free. So if you visit tables, you'll get put into the raffle, so, yeah. But it is something that we want to look into. So again, for our newer members, we get these updates from the state that say you should look at this one, this might have changed, you know, there's a new law, and so that's the work of this year. But we do have two tonight. One is the middle school pathway exploration policy. Again, this was a state regulation and law that came down, so we are going to ask you to vote on that tonight. And then we have three job descriptions, which are really self-explanatory. We didn't have the varsity athletic coach and assistant coach job descriptions before. We have the people. And then we just added the new associate athletic coach. So we said, why don't we do a job description for all three?
All right, we'll do that after. Yep, thank you, thank you for the explanation. Thank you, Carrie. Budget and Facilities Subcommittee.
We met on September 19th. Jordan pretty much covered everything. I guess things right now are the wastewater treatment and the Moore Middle School being voted on at the town meeting, October 20th.
Thank you. Every time you bring up that wastewater treatment, I think of you in the middle of that. Were you there at one point? Didn't you do a tour or something?
Oh, yes, we did.
You did a tour, yes, oh, that's right, you, I just think of.
We've talked about it for so many years.
Yes, I know, oh my goodness, I know, exciting. Okay, thank you. Special Education Parent Advisory Council, CPAC.
Oh, that's me. Well. Well, we haven't met, it's quarterly, right? So we haven't met yet.
But the Federation for Children, which we're our members of, has updated their approach to how they do professional development. So now it's allowing any interested participant to register for any of their open sessions. So we've shared out that monthly schedule with our community. But we did participate in the September 25th virtual session, focusing on the parents' rights regarding evaluation and eligibility. So we'll continue to share out those monthly offerings. And CPAC will also have a table at the resource fair to help with getting families enrolled and whatever resources that they need for support. So, but yes, after that, it is, it is monthly, quarterly, sorry, when the committee say that they'll be picking up again in January.
Okay, thank you. The District Diversity Equity Inclusion. Oh, sorry, did I miss that? Cape Cod Collaborative, Carrie.
So we did have the meeting. I actually just zoomed in, but I will be attending the next meeting, which is October 15th in person. It was great because everybody kind of introduced themselves and they have some new staff as well and they've got, they're expanding the roles. And there was, there was a lot that they went over, but it was really more budgetary and just, you know, structural stuff like kicking off the year. But there's a lot that they're going to be doing this year, so I'm excited about the next meeting.
Good, oh, that's great, thank you. The Diversity Equity Inclusion and Belonging Committee.
I have the update from Jessie Clemm, who chairs that committee. So the first DEIB committee meeting will be Tuesday, October 21st, starting at 3:45 at B.I.S. And all are welcome to attend, although they are still seeking members, if anyone is interested in that committee.
Sure, okay, thank, is that it? Thank you, that's it, thank you. All right, District Technology Committee.
So the District Technology Committee met yesterday, September 30th. There was about six of us there. We had some new, some new staff join us. We talked mostly around what's working, what's not working in the classrooms around educational technology. We spoke about some of our new software programs that we've been rolling out, such as GoGuardi and Teacher, which is, gives teachers the ability to monitor Chromebooks for all the students that are in front of them in the class. And also, you're also able to use it as a good teaching tool to pre-open tabs for them, to direct them to certain websites, so they're already there, open, ready to go. And then we also just talked about the best ways that we can utilize our new John Troy in that new position and pushing into classrooms and helping to work the teachers to model technology lessons.
Nice, okay, thank you. District School Wellness Advisory Committee. SWAC.
SWAC.
SWAC, I guess, right?
I'm just thrilled that my partner in crime, Christine Mourning, has joined the wellness committee as a co-chair this year. Thank you so much.
Wow.
Volunteering for that.
Volunteering. I'm sure when the meetings are.
We'll get to that. And if there are any parents out there who would like to join our committee, please reach out to Christine or myself. We're always going to take on some more people to help us get our, get our work done. The SWAC will meet four times this year, so it's not a huge commitment. It's mandated by law that we meet four times, so we meet four times. We're going to be continuing, this will be our second year, working with a coach from the John Stalker Institute. It's free of charge, which is great. So we're going to work with our coach, who just reached out to us today, yesterday, for the first time. So we have to schedule our initial meeting with her. But we are going to complete an assessment of the implementation of the brand-new policy that we just created last year, identify priorities, and create action plans for implementation based off of the assessment. That'll be our goal. And then we'll just be in this cycle moving forward now, continuing to assess. And then every three years, we have to look at the policy again. So the committee is back on track and hopefully at our next meeting, we'll already have one meeting.
Is this looking at the physical wellness or mental wellness or is it everything?
It's going to tie in, and this year, because of how we wrote the policy, all the principles now are mandated to be on it. So I'm really happy to see in their SIPs they were talking about wellness.
Yeah.
Really just help tie it all together and actually make our work easier, because it's already in their action plans, so.
Would be so cool to have like a local business, like a trainer or, I'm thinking like Blended Berry or, you know, just somebody join the, join your group volunteer. No or yes? No?
It's open to any parent.
Like a nutritionist or something, yeah.
Community members.
Community members, yeah. Nice, okay, and it meets four times a year? Okay, that's easy, okay. Right, Mrs. Mourning?
And?
Easy peasy. Oh, you're on, gosh, I think you're on every committee, Carrie. Okay, thank you, that seems like a nice one, they all seem great. Okay, discussion items is directed by the committee. I think we're good. Yep, we're good. We just wanted to leave extra time at the end. So we're going to vote on a few things. Vote to approve warrants and payroll.
I move to approve warrants and payroll.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Okay, is there any discussion? Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed say no. Any abstentions? Nope, the motion is passed unanimously, thank you. Vote to approve regular session minutes of July 2nd and September 3rd.
So as a point of, point of order, I guess?
Yes.
The July 2nd ones were not in the folder because our recording secretary didn't have access to the recording. However, our amazing school committee secretary did prepare those minutes, so they'll be in for next month. So therefore, the only vote tonight that can be done is September 3rd.
Will be September 3rd, thank you for that correction. Okay, thank you very much.
Move to approve the regular minutes of September 3rd, 2025.
Second, is there any discussion around that? Nope. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All those opposed say no. Any abstentions? The motion passes unanimously, thank you. All righty, the next one is vote to approve school committee. We already did that, okay, sorry. I think I'm, yeah, I think I need glasses, or I'm kind of tired, sorry. Vote to approve middle school pathway exploration policy.
So this policy, again, was mandated by the state. It came into regulation over the summer. We have a policy that's here, I'll put it up on the board. It went through Policy Sub already as a recommendation to all. We need to submit it to the state once we approve it. And it basically says how you will make sure that our students in Moore Middle School are getting a lot of exposure, information about career and technical education and their pathways. So not only is that about things over at the vocational school and their opportunities there, but also opportunities here at our schools to be able to participate fully. So it kind of just lists how we'll do that and when we'll do that. And also that we use MYCAP, which is a state-approved program that helps connect them to their post, their secondary, post-secondary planning. College and career readiness is basically what it is.
Okay.
Hopefully you had a chance to review it, it's been linked for a little while. And, yeah, we hope that you will approve it. If you have any questions, then Christine Mourning and her team did a lot of work on this.
Okay, thank you. Okay, is there a motion?
Move to approve the middle school pathway exploration policy.
All right, is there a second?
Second.
Second, okay, thank you. Is there any discussion around that? Nope. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. The motion is passed unanimously, thank you. Vote to approve FY '26 student activity accounts.
So it's part of the three important things that school committees do, policy, budget, looks like we can't gain access to that right now, and programming. It would have been in your folder, so you guys have already seen it. You need to approve these financial accounts.
Oh, yes.
And Jordan, would you like to add any more information about the listing here? This also went to budget facilities, no?
Yes, this was where we reviewed our budget for the sub last week. So it's just a straight list of the different student activity accounts. You can obviously see there's a lot more student-generated accounts at the high school, less at the middle school, and even fewer as we get down. Elementary typically just have a general account. That's how they operate. But best practice for the school committee to be aware of those accounts and to vote them up or down every year.
Okay, thank you. Is there a motion?
Move to approve the FY '26 student activity accounts.
Okay, second.
Second.
Second, thank you. Is there any discussion around this?
I just have one question.
Sure.
How often do we review these accounts to make sure that they're active? Like, I'm seeing, like, postage, sewing club, these are all active clubs.
So last year, we did go through a process of deactivating them.
Okay.
As a school committee, so they got a lot, so I asked for the active ones for this year.
So if they're on the list, they're good?
Yeah.
Okay, cool.
Okay, sounds good.
All in favor? It's actually the Level Up, am I saying it correctly?
Oh, is it the Level Up? Yeah.
I just remembered.
Yes.
Yes. That's the Level Up, they use it for curriculum counting change and job schedules.
That's awesome.
I asked Mrs. Candler to change the name, though.
So it's not misinterpreted?
So it's more connected to the students who are actually doing the work.
Nice, oh, that's great. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed say no. Any abstentions? The motion passes unanimously, thank you. Vote to approve Blue Star families. Did I?
Yeah, I did.
Yeah, I did that, sorry. Vote to approve the following job descriptions.
So if you're going to take them up.
Individually?
I think you can take them up individually.
Okay.
And again, these went through Policy Sub. They were recommended to us by K.T. Alexander, our athletic director. And we just want to get them in place so that when we post the next time, we tell them what they're applying for.
All righty, so a motion for the varsity athletic coach?
I'm so moved.
All right, second.
Second.
Okay, is there any discussion around that? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed say no.
No.
Any abstentions? The motion passes unanimously.
I meant to say no.
Yes, sorry.
No, 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 I wasn't saying no, no.
Thank you. I was like, oh my gosh, I don't know if that's unanimous.
Sorry.
You guys, it's case of late. Yes, please hang on, you guys, I'm like repeating myself.
Absolutely.
All right, okay, so.
Now we do that.
The Assistant Athletic Coach, is there a motion?
Motion to approve the Assistant Athletic Coach job description.
Second.
Second.
Okay, is there any discussion around this? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed say no. Any abstentions? The motion passes unanimously, thank you. The next one is Associate Athletic Coach.
Move to approve the Associate Athletic Coach. Move to approve the Associate Athletic Coach.
Second. Thank you. Any discussion around this one?